Good evening. This is the Charlton Board of Selectmen meeting August 28, 2018. It will start at 6:30 p.m. Would everybody rise for the pledge? Please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight's agenda, we have approved the minutes of the regular meeting from August 14, 2018. Community relations announcements in open forum, appointments and resignations, one resignation, an appointment for the cultural council, and an appointment for the stipend advisory committee. No scheduled appointments. New business, we have the cable television license renewal legal services agreement, the site plan application to VGG, 44 Old Worcester Road, comments from the Board of Selectmen back to the planning board, Civic Plus contract, which is the website vendor that we're entertaining, offering a contract to. Under old business, marijuana special town meeting vote follower. Article one to see if the town of Charlton will vote to rescind the adoption of Article 27 of the town Charlton 2018 annual town meeting warrant. And Article two was for citizens petition for prohibition of non-medical marijuana general by law. After that, we'll have committee reports, policy review, town administrators' report. Other business unknown at the time of posting. Our next meeting is, our next regular scheduled meeting is September 11, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. The selectmen are going to have a Board of Selectmen goals and objectives meeting on October 2, 2018, at 6:30 p.m. at Ford Dresser Hill Road. The Board is going to adjourn to executive session to discuss the dispoint of dismissal of or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. And three, to discuss strategy regarding litigation and potential settlement with public power concerning the town's electricity supply agreement. And from that, we're going to exit executive session and we'll adjourn from that.
Excuse me, I believe you have in there, you will come back, you may come back to open session if you need to take a vote on the public power or...
You are correct. So the last statement is incorrect. We will return to open session for the purposes of any other action and then to adjourn. With that, the motion on the...
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the August 14 meeting minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Spire, which is a second.
Second.
On my favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Singer abstained. Community relations and announcements. Old Home Day, Saturday, September 1, 2018, concert and fireworks. Monday, September 3, 2018, events and parade. If you have any questions or need more information, if you visit thetowncharlton.net, there's a list of all the activities and things that are going to be going on on Old Home Day. Just a reminder, the town hall will be closed on Monday, September 3, 2018, in observance of Labor Day. Lafayette, the Revolutionary War general in Charlton. Commemoration of General Lafayette's stop at the Rider Tavern in Charlton on his 1824-1825 farewell tour. Tour, it's going to be rain or shine. It's at Rider Tavern, 255 Stafford Street. Tours of the Rider Tavern are from 1:30 to 3:00 p.m. The event commences at 3:00 p.m. and will finish at 6:00 p.m. These are the current openings on committees and boards in Charlton. CMR PC, we need one alternate delegate. Zoning Board of Appeals, two alternates. Stipend's Advisory Committee, two citizens at large. EDC, one member and one alternate. Activities Council, one member. Boston Post Kane Committee, one member. Cultural Council, three members. Historical Commission, one member. For descriptions of committees, visit towncharlton.net website. If you're interested, send letter of interest in a complete or a complete, completed talent bank form filed online and sent to the Board of Selectmen at 37 Main Street, Charlton, Mass. 01507. Does anybody on the Board have any public announcements or comments? Anybody in the audience have public announcements or comments? Is this public forum time?
Public forum.
That was a separate topic. I'm here tonight to speak on the issue of truth. This came to the forefront in my mind about three and a half weeks ago when I saw a CBS Channel 4 WBZ out of Boston's report right after the special town meeting where an interview was taking place and an individual in town said that the growth facility of the marijuana was 500 feet from the very school they were standing at. And I said, "That just doesn't sound right to me." So I did a little research and I drove Morton Station Road. Morton Station Road itself is just over five tenths of a mile, and that's well beyond 500 feet. And I decided, "Well, let me check to see how long the driveway is to the school." And that was just also over a half a mile. And so to confirm my thoughts, I went to Google Maps, plugged in Charlton Middle School, Charlton Orchards Farm, and from the bottom of the road that leads up to the farm to the front door of the school was one mile and one tenth. Now, remembering from my days in school, a mile is 5,280 feet. And then also knowing a little bit of math, I was able to just move the decimal plate over one point and came up with a tenth of a mile is 528 feet. So the total distance from Charlton Middle School to the beginning of the road that goes up to the orchard is 5,808 feet. And to give some perspective, that's 1,936 yards, which is about 19 and 1/3 football fields, well beyond 500 feet. So I tried to also figure out, well, what is actually 500 feet? So I Googled map Ted's Package Store to the post office behind it, and it was one tenth of a mile. That short distance is 528 feet, even more than the 500 feet that was recorded in this interview on WBZ. And to verify my information, you can go to YouTube. You can type in Charlton residents take first step toward banning recreational pot facilities, and it will come up, the report from WBZ in its full entirety. I'm concerned about this because either the person speaking was completely not knowledgeable of what the real distance was from the middle school to the orchard, or there was an effort to create fear in the people who might see that news report. So I'm asking those folks who plan to speak on the issue that's ahead for this town that you better speak the truth. I'll be watching, and I will call you out if you do not have verifiable information or you speak things that are not true. It's unfortunate that this kind of thing is happening right here where people say things and they don't have their facts lined up. And so I'm asking people, before you start talking, make sure you have verifiable information and you don't slant things to try to create fear, although I don't know if that was the purpose of that statement. That's only my conjecture. But I don't think I've ever seen anybody, and the reason I added all the way to the driveway of the schools, I don't think I've ever seen in the four years my daughter was going to the middle school, any kid actually walk home from school. They either got on the buses or picked up at the door by somebody, a parent, or a brother or sister who drives. So I added that in there. It's well beyond 500 feet, and people should know that and realize that that report on WBZ, the night of the special meeting, presented incorrect information to the citizens of Charlton.
Is there anybody else?
Is this going to be our only open forum speaking tonight tonight?
Well, when we, I know what everybody's here for, okay? The selectmen will allow people to speak, but we're going to keep it very briefly when we talk about the vote, what we're going to do about the vote.
My name's Steve Corones, 17 Old Worcester Road. I was the one on WBZ that made that comment.
Of 500 feet?
I recognize you.
You do? I bet you do. Thank you. So I don't know if, the first thing you need to understand is that it goes property line to property line, not school to dwelling, correct? So I may, in the heat of the moment, I may have been off by 500, but it's, it's not 5,000. But, but we...
Excuse me, just allow Steve to speak, please.
But the point of my argument that night is we're still talking feet, and there were three schools. I didn't measure out, I can, I could go out tonight and do it. We didn't measure out the distance between the three schools that are involved. Or, and like this gentleman said, his daughter never walked that road to school. My son has walked home once or twice. But if you add 200 employees to that narrow windy road, it's a big problem. I may have been off on that. I apologize for that statement. Maybe in the heat of the moment, you kind of get the adrenaline going, you know how it gets going, but, but we're still talking feet. We're not talking miles. And there were three schools in the area, and that's pretty much all I wanted to say at this point for that.
Thank you, Steve.
But it's a neighborhood.
Yes, and we understand that. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Anybody else for open forum? Jerry?
Jerry Russell, 63 Old Worcester Road, and I'll be brief.
Thank you.
In the special town meeting on August 1, voters voted overwhelmingly to have a vote on the issue of a marijuana bylaw. The vote was overwhelming. It's my understanding in a communication from Selectman Safarowitz, Mr. Chairman, that he's looking for more study on this issue. And frankly, the town of Charlton, its selectmen and the planning board have had a lot of time to study this issue since the vote was taken in 2016. And the suggestion has been made that a vote be delayed until the town meeting come the spring, the town election. And now clearly, a good representation of voter sentiment in town can better be gauged by a ballot vote on a state election as opposed to a town election. If you really want to gauge how people in town feel, then the best way to do it is to have the ballot during a state election, not a town election when you get several hundred, 500, 800 people voting. A vote delayed is a vote denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Yes, ma'am.
I would just, my name is Farida and I live on Nugget Drive. And to Mr. Russell's point about getting a true view of what the town of Charlton residents and, well, actually voters, because not all residents are voters, want is by presidential election. Everyone in this room knows that when there is a vote to go on, the presidential election will get the most voters in a precinct out. So if you really want a true, true view on what the residents and the voters want is to do it at a presidential election, then I think that was done. That's what I want to say.
And the chair would just caution that when people are speaking, if they could just speak to the Board, you know, please, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Board. And I did a little research as well, looking at what our neighbors are doing because there is a feeling, there have been statements that Charlton should vote like everybody else. So I looked at Auburn, Webster, Oxford, Southbridge, Spencer, Lester, Sturbridge, and Dudley. And of all those towns, only Southbridge and Spencer have had a townwide ballot. All the other towns' actions on marijuana zoning or allowing, or in the case of some towns, a moratorium to allow the town to decide how to zone for marijuana, has been done via town meeting, not by ballot. In Spencer, there was a townwide ballot, and the Spencer residents voted to not allow any marijuana in their town. Southbridge has had two votes. The first vote allowed marijuana, and for some reason, I couldn't find out, just looking on the Internet, they had a second vote, and the second vote was the opposite way. And I think this shows just how close this matter is, that some of these towns I looked at, the votes are, in Auburn, less than 75 people showed up to that Auburn Town Meeting and voted their zoning bylaw into effect for marijuana. So I think that what we're seeing in our neighboring towns is not this right to vote, but this, through the zoning laws, through the channels of town meeting. And Charlton has a bylaw, a zoning bylaw on marijuana. And people who are not happy with that bylaw can work to amend the bylaw through the appropriate process of a bylaw amendment, through the planning board or the zoning board to amend this bylaw. So I feel that asking that this right to a vote, I don't really see this reflected in the greater community in southern Worcester County. So maybe this is coming from other places like Cambridge or North Andover, but it's not here. And I just did want to bring that to the attention of the Board, what is going on around us. And for the most part, those towns that have voted on a moratorium, this is not a ban. Dudley has to, by the end of November 2018, decide what they're going to do. Sturbridge also has the end of their moratorium coming up. And I think what happened in Charlton is we didn't have a zoning bylaw, and we started to accept some marijuana business into town, and people were upset about that initially in 20, was it 2017, that first town meeting vote? And nothing happened from that town meeting vote, and things went on. And then we had a second marijuana, a very big marijuana business coming into town, and so people got energized, and now they want to change it. So I believe that we need to go through the proper process and use the zoning bylaws and not ask for a second vote. Thank you for listening. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick point of order. Would you prefer all these comments now, or would you get to the adjutant?
Bill, what I'm going to do is I'm going to allow people to make comments now, and then when we go, when the Board is discussing what we are going to do, if somebody wants to make a very brief comment, we'll allow that.
Right.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Board. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I, I've given you all a handout, and what I did is I took the proposed law, question four, that was, that everybody voted on to legalize marijuana in the state of Massachusetts. And in that vote, there's a section that says a city or town could, could, and that's the word, hold a local vote to determine whether to permit the selling of marijuana, marijuana products, et cetera, in their town. And I believe that at least some of the people felt, if they voted yes, that they would get another chance if it came to their town. And I just want to point that out to you. I'm just saying that. And my other point is that if you do allow the vote to go through and it gets shot down because there's, hey, it's a pretty good chance it will, then don't you think this whole thing's going to blow over and just fall apart? And then you guys can go back to your normal lives, so to speak. But anyways, that's just my opinion. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the handout.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else? Kristen?
Good evening. Kristen Castigan, Carroll Hill Road. I'd like to point out another inaccuracy in the WBZ report. They reported that last year we had a vote and that we voted in favor of pot. That wasn't true. I don't know why they said that. I'd like to just, for the record, give a little history. In April of 2017, the Board of Selectmen received a petition requesting a local vote on hosting marijuana in town. With over 200 signatures in five days, it was completely ignored. Also, at the May 2017 town meeting, 16 months ago, three to one residents voted in favor of requesting from the Board of Selectmen the opportunity to vote on hosting marijuana in Charlton. That was, again, ignored. Now, we had to run around and call by citizens petition a meeting for a third time, requesting from our elected people who take an oath to represent the community, not just themselves, the entire community. And, you know, we're here tonight wondering whether people are actually going to follow through on their word. All right, so that's that. The second thing I'd like to point out is that nobody who does not live here should not be advocating to deny our community a vote. There are people here who live in communities which did vote to either put in moratoriums or bans by a general bylaw. Those people should not advocate to take away other Americans' right to vote that is given to us by Massachusetts state law. Secondly, the vast majority of Massachusetts community leaders have willingly enabled their communities a voice. Ms. Davis did give you an overview of some local communities, but I will say that the vast majority, when they were requested a voice, were given a voice. There wasn't any reason to not listen to the people in their own community. I mean, it is America, right? Next, lawyers take an oath to uphold laws. Massachusetts laws give local control to communities concerning marijuana. Federal law states that marijuana is completely illegal. If there were any liability at all in this entire business process, it would be in hosting something that's federally illegal, not in allowing your own citizens a vote on something that state law grants them a vote on. Right? Doesn't that make sense?
So, Kristen, if you could, if you could move it along a little bit more quickly, please.
Okay.
Okay, we have a lot of business tonight.
All right. Lastly, there was a little discussion, a little banter about conflicts between zoning bylaws and general bylaws. And I'd like to point out that these conflicts already exist in several communities. North Andover is an excellent example. Also, communities like Westboro, North Andover, and Lexington have used general bylaws to completely ban recreational marijuana business. So it's not something that hasn't been done before. We aren't in uncharted territory. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Is that it for open forum? Ms. Benjamin?
I got like five pages thrown to go through, this much of it. I'm not going to, honestly.
Please.
The 2016 vote already came up, and there's just one thing I'd like to say about that. During that hotly contested presidential election, there was a large youth turnout. Revoting the matter says, "We don't care how these residents voted. They're busy creating their lives and likely not paying attention at the moment." I know we would all like to see the citizens who support moving forward with adult sales to come forward and be vocal. I can tell you I've spoken to many and had written correspondence with many as well. They are worried about being targeted. They're worried about their jobs. A lot of us have jobs where, you know, zero tolerance is the norm, and it's the only thing allowed. So coming forward to speak out about this is an uncomfortable situation for them. They would rather support us by writing letters, by anything else, but coming up here and talking out loud with the Board of Selectmen. I also had concerns about a lot of the miscommunication, which I think has been very purposefully I've seen, and I know you've seen, the write-ups about, during the citizens' first petition, 16 or 17 Walmarts. Nothing could be farther from the truth. And when you think about a Walmart, you know, you see the big parking lot, you see the 18-wheelers coming in, you see the pavement. That, that creates an emotional response. It's designed to make people angry. We've seen correspondence, we've seen stuff in the news, we've seen things on Facebook that have blamed so many people for everything that has happened. The bylaw being rewritten without the planning board's knowledge, blaming so many people for putting their hands in that. The conspiracies are just, people are using this stuff to make people angry and to turn them against the Board. And that is just inexcusable. You know, adult use supports medical research and development. It requires large private investment. One of the latest sarcasms I've seen from opposition members is related to VGG not showing an R&amp;D facility in their plan recently submitted. As members...
Ms. Benjamin, could I just, could I just say something?
Yes.
We don't want to rehash this whole thing, okay? And what I would like to do is, if you could succinctly, please get to the point so we can move on to do our vote later on in the meeting. Thank you.
Well, the one thing I'd like to say is, the folks that have a problem with this project going onto agricultural, commercial land have made it a very much a challenge for the zoning piece of it. And yet, they're complaining about an R&amp;D facility not being on that property when they, I'm sure, know it can't be there. It never could be. So it's just a lot of, it's a lot of miscommunication to make people angry, and I just want to make sure that we all understand that. And when citizens are putting something together to put a petition together, to get people to sign a petition, it is so important that the information that they put out there is true. And if it's not true, it should be thrown out.
Thank you very much for your comments. Mrs. Russell.
Thank you. Margaret Russell, Old Worcester Road in Charlton, right across from Charlton Orchards. We're here, we're here to talk about voting tonight, whether, whether the people of Charlton should have a vote. It's a vote that is authorized by the law. If we voted as we did at the town meeting to present a general bylaw to prohibit marijuana, there's a second step, and it is, it is a general vote. To the previous speaker's point about people not standing up in public to vote, you know, to express their opinion, a vote is anonymous. A townwide vote would, would be open to anyone who wishes to vote. The 2016 election where the town of Charlton voted 48% to 52% in favor of legalizing marijuana was a 300, less than 300 vote majority. So 300 people said, "This is, this is how we want to vote." Selectmen have said since 2017 that that's the vote that they are basing their go-ahead on. But I think that the 2017 town meeting vote, where it was three to one in the town meeting to say, "No, this is not how we want to vote." The 2018 special town meeting vote, where it was almost two-thirds of the people said, "No, this is not how we want to vote." I think selectmen need to look again and ask the town again, more specifically, what they want to vote about on regarding marijuana. Legalizing marijuana doesn't mean we want marijuana to be sold and grown in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. Yes, ma'am.
In regards to the vote being...
In regards to the vote being Shane Burke, eighty-five Highland Road.
Thank you.
In regards to a vote being anonymous, yes, if it actually makes it to a voting booth, it's anonymous. But the process of us having to hold cards up in a town hall meeting is not anonymous. I had to basically express my opinions and my vote in front of an entire audience of people. Some people are not going to feel comfortable doing that. I do, I don't mind, but there's plenty of people that do not. In addition to that, you have to pay very close attention to what's going on in town politics to understand that any of these votes are going on. So you have one side that is, you know, very passionate about what they want, and I can respect that, right? But they are paying far more attention to what's going on, this small core group of people, than the various people in Charlton that are, you know, potentially interested in this but may not, may not know about it. And, you know, people don't necessarily participate in small government as much as they should. Obviously, this has shown me that it's a good thing for me to come to these meetings and see what's going on. And I have engaged some other people my age as well and some younger people to try to get involved in the process as well. But acting like a couple hundred people that abut a potential farm is a majority and the will of the community, I feel like, is nearsighted. And just because you don't see us all literally lining up here, I barely made it here today. I did a thirteen-hour day before I came here. You know, I'm just trying to work and focus on my career, but I have to constantly keep coming down here to voice my opinions on the ways I feel things should be working, even though, time and time again, our state has proven that we are in support of recreational marijuana and medicinal marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. I'm Noreen Johnson Smith. I live at one thirty-six Dresser Hill Road. I'm not in a butter to the proposed project. I'm not part of any organized group. I work long hours, and I've attended more planning committee and Board of Selectmen meetings in the last few months than I ever care to attend again.
They're fun.
They're really fun, and I appreciate the hours and the time that, that our folks spend in town government. As someone who's working full-time plus and also doesn't have time to follow these meetings, I would just like to express that I represent a very large group of middle-aged people in Charlton who are working also and who can't get to these meetings to express their views. And I would appreciate the opportunity to vote on this issue. I think every community has had discussions like this. And where there has been enough interest, communities have bothered to take the temperature of the town and find out what people actually do think instead of having forums like this where one group can clog up one side and one can clog up the other. And I think it's really a responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to answer this request for the opportunity to vote. Again, I have no interest in the marijuana industry. I have no interest in any of this particular discussion. But I'm very concerned about the direction of our town. And like many other people and many other families in town, my town, my family was split. Some people in our family voted yes for legalizing marijuana, and some people in our family voted no. And we kind of laughed about canceling each other out all over the place. But we all assumed that we would have an opportunity to vote when it came to retail operations and what that might mean for the town. People in the family that voted yes are concerned that we don't have a voice. And the people in the family who voted no are concerned that we don't have a voice. So I would implore you to please fulfill that responsibility and the opportunity that you have to allow people to actually take a vote in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Stephen Pierce, I'm on Route thirty-one. I, I'd just like to reiterate a couple of points. We did already have a vote on this. And I know that it's, it's not clear to a lot of people that, once that vote did occur, it was an addendum to that ballot measure four, giving the towns the right to say, "Yes, we will take a vote," if the town council, the council for the city, or its representatives decided to do so. I think it's important to understand that the turnout during the ballot four measure was largely driven by ballot four. And yet, it's still passed in this town. And I think by doing another vote, another request, we're only doing a vote on no, not in my neighborhood. But it's gone further than that. It's now become, "No, not in my town at all." And I think that's wrong. I, I think the people voted, and the majority was, to say, "Yes, we want it in this town." To have a vote now at a town level, a midterm level, any kind of special election besides a primary, where I think we actually had a record turnout for voters in our town, is kind of dishonest. And I think that this vote, if you want it, do it in a primary again.
Presidential.
Yes.
Thank you. Excellent, thank you. With that, I'm gonna, with that, I'm gonna close, close this off. We're gonna move on to our regular agenda. So, Ms. Craven.
Yes. Resignations and appointment for the Cultural Council. We have been notified by Kathleen Walker and Cedric Flower, who have been appointed to the Cultural Council by the Board, cannot be members on the Council due to both of them being elected officials. Attached is an email from Kathleen Walker confirming this. You are asked to accept the resignations of both Kathleen and Cedric. They both plan to continue to assist the Cultural Council. However, they can just not be members. Letters thanking them for their time are in your signed folder. The Cultural Council has been in need of members for quite some time. Each member is appointed to, appointed is allowed to serve two, three-year consecutive terms, then must remove themselves for one year, which at, at that time, they could seek reappointment. With that said, please find attached a talent bank form from Natalie Matthews, seeking appointment to the Cultural Council. She has met with the Council and is interested in being a member. I would recommend the Board make the appointment as requested.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Saffron.
I move that we accept Ms. Walker and Mr. Flowers' resignation and appoint Ms. Matthews to the Cultural Council.
Second?
Second. We have motion, second, and discussion. All in favor? Aye.
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 Ms. Craven.
Yes, sir. Attached is a request from Jean Vincent, seeking appointment to the stipend advisory committee. Originally, Ms. Vincent asked to be considered for the solar moratorium committee, but that committee is full. She is interested now in the stipend advisory committee. If appointed, this would fill the two positions needed for the current Board Committee Commission members, with Dick Vaughn already appointed as the other member. I would recommend the Board make the appointment as requested. The openings on this committee are still being run on cable and the town's website, which is Two Citizens at Large. We are still waiting for a recommendation from the Personnel Board for an appointee. And they have asked our, we've asked our HR Director for assistance with this.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffron.
I move that we appoint Ms. Vincent to the stipend advisory committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Craven, new business?
Yes, sir. As you know, we're getting ready to renegotiate our cable contract with Charter and will need legal assistance. We've negotiated a contract with William August, currently of Epstein and August LLP, attorneys-at-law from Cambridge, Massachusetts, in an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Attorney August will perform certain legal services, such as reviewing and analyze the various materials and proposals concerning Charter communications, cable television renewal process and Charter. Offer advice to us on the various aspects of cable television renewal process, including but not limited to legal, regulatory, and financial advice and procedural substantial issues pertaining to the cable license renewal. Draft such letters as necessary to the cable television license renewal applicant. At the appropriate time, draft or mark up as applicable findings, the ascertainment report and filings, if and as requested by the town. A request for proposal if negotiations do not resolve through informal negotiations and a cable television renewal license for the client. Meet with Charter officials when necessary with the Town Administrator and Cable Advisory Committee as the primary liaisons, attend and participate in meetings, negotiation sessions, and/or public hearings that the client holds in connection with the cable television renewal process. If you remember, we use this company, this, this is the same company we used last time that we had our cable contract. I respectfully request that you approve the contract with Epstein and August for cable legal services and to authorize me to execute a contract for said services in the amount of not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Do we have motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Saffron.
I move that we approve the contract with Epstein and August for the cable liaison services and authorize the Town Administrator to execute a contract for the services in amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir. The Planning Board has provided you with a copy of a site plan application submitted to them by Valley Green Grow, sixteen hundred Osgood Street, North Andover, Massachusetts. The applicant is requesting approval to construct an indoor marijuana cultivation facility consisting of eight hundred and sixty thousand square foot of closed greenhouse space and a hundred and thirty thousand square foot post-harvest processing facility and a ten thousand square foot co-generation facility with a capacity of approximately eighteen megawatts. The property is located at forty-four Old Worcester Road, Charlton, and is listed as Sessors Map Thirty-Six, Block C, Lots Ten and Ten Point One. Said property contains approximately ninety-four point six acres and is zoned agricultural and business community. You are asked to review the application. And should you have any questions or comments, we must notify the Planning Board no later than September fourth.
Does the Board have any questions or comments at this time for forward to the Planning Board?
It's just gonna be discussion, I'm gonna leave.
It's just for comments, David, for the Planning Board, so I would say probably you don't have to.
Mr. Chair. When is the, when are they holding the hearing, the public hearing?
They have a meeting on September fifth.
So that's probably, yeah, the Wednesday. What are the closest ones here?
That would be September fifth, I believe.
Okay.
And certainly, Board members can go and make their comments, not also.
Absolutely. And if, in the follow-up, if anybody thinks of any questions or comments that they'd like the Town Administrator to forward to the Planning Board, please contact the Town Administrator.
Aye, September fourth.
Before September fourth.
Which is next Tuesday.
Correct. You have a couple of days.
Yes.
Civic Plus contract.
Before I start with that, I'd like to start out by reminding you, one, that we have been looking at different ways to upgrade the website. And before we have that conversation, I'd like to acknowledge Lisa Westwell from Wes-
Weswell Web Works.
Thank you.
W W W.
She's been fantastic. She's assisted us over the years. I know she's been doing it since I've been here. And as we've talked before, the town is growing and moving forward. The requests for services has increased. And the Technology Committee has gone out to bid for a website, new website design that will kind of take us up. I spoke with Lisa, and she has been supportive of us taking that next step. And I'd like to put something together for her and thanking her for all the good work that she's done for us.
Absolutely. She's been very good to the town.
So with that, let me go to my memo. The Technology Committee interviewed several website design companies and have chosen Civic Plus to recommend to you tonight. I have attached the contract that Town Council assisted in creating. We are excited about making the website more easy to navigate and easy for departments to update their pages. The Town Clerk will save time, as she will be able to post meetings herself. The contract cost is twenty-four thousand, six hundred and ten dollars for the first year, then six thousand, four hundred and fifty in years two and three with a two percent increase if you decide to go into the fourth year. The twenty-four thousand is for the initial design and complete overhaul. We would also have, the police and fire were proposing to put new headers in there for them. And I would also ask you to consider voting that all of the sites will be under this same website so that we can try and have unification rather than having different departments having different websites. So Deb Chikorini, who is the Chair of the Technology Committee, is here to answer any questions you may have.
Hi, Deb. Good evening, good. First of all, I wanna thank Pink Home and Selectmen for supporting this cause. Been on the Technology Committee for a long time. And we've been without proper funding for technology for quite a number of years. And it's been noted in various audit management reports that, you know, we need to hashtag catch up with what's happening here. Recently, the town has hired some very professional and technology-driven power users to head up departments, particularly finance, human resource, police and fire. So we're all anxious to, you know, make the website what it should be, really, and is to educate, you know, the public and just use it as a wonderful forum for our community. You know, use more robust online services. And, you know, without neglecting to thank Weswell Web Works for all the work and the many, many years that she has done. Sadly, we have just flatly outgrown, you know, our website.
And that was Lisa's comment to us, I believe, when we got into the talk about it. She said, she said, "You've outgrown me."
Yes, yes. But just a few comments on Civic Plus to make you feel, you know, a little better about the investment. I have spoken to many of the towns that use them currently. Particularly closer to us is Webster, but Amherst, Northampton, Brookline. This is a very robust, this would be the last time that we have to deal with this. You know, in four years, they'll update us, you know, for, for no cost at all.
I'm sorry, so it'll be an automatic update?
Yes, they'll refresh us. And they've been completely satisfied with the implementation, the training, the conversion, from kickoff to going live. So I've heard this, you know, through a few towns. So, you know, I feel pretty good about it. They have very easy to use. They use a CMS system, which is the content management system, particularly for local government, so that it's easier to have communications back and forth, in and out from the public and internally as well. They have, you know, it's a secure cloud-based support, twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, fully responsive to any device that you may have, any type of screen size, anything like that. Dedicated project development plan for us. And also, one of the things that became effective in January of two thousand and eighteen is a section five oh eight, the federal regulation, so that any government website now has to be kind of ADA compliant. You, you have to allow people with whatever disability they have to be able to read and use the content of your website. So that was one of the first things, you know, they noticed. So, you know, so that we all feel good about what we're putting out there. It is our front face, you know, to the world, really, to the community. And the thing I like about it is the additional modules going down the road in the future. I have Jessica, I was speaking to her earlier today in HR. They have a fantastic HR module. It tracks applicants. It's, it, it could take a part-time person to do what this software will do in a click, you know, for Jessica. So same with Town Clerk. They have a very fantastic clerk application or module. So down the road, once we get up and running and we get comfortable with, you know, appropriating money for this, which I think will be well worth it. And do you have any other questions?
If I can add, one of the holdbacks of making this leap has been that we have not had staff to assist us in technology. And I, along with Debbie, thank you and the Finance Committee for taking to town meeting funding for an IT person. So we think that that, then, now we believe that we can actually support the system in-house.
Good. Thank you very much.
About time. And thank Debbie and the Technology Committee for their work.
Yes, please, thank my committee members. I'm just the paper pusher, really. They are the technical side of this committee.
So if I can ask, when will we first start to see changes?
Well, if we sign the contract, I'm hoping in the fall, probably a month or two.
We can roll this out?
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully, it'll fall in line with our new in-house, our IT person that we're looking for. But it doesn't have to happen that way. Certainly, you know, after the first of the year, I was hoping to start to see a little bit of a rollout as to how it's gonna look. And we'll have several different little sneak previews, so everybody can join in. Department heads will let you know.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions for the, Dave?
Yeah, just a quick one. So I-
So I, there are a bunch of pages in here. I don't see about, maybe this is as far as updating of content. So are we doing that ourselves, or is the?
Yes.
If we're doing that ourselves, who's going to do that? The IT person?
The IT person will do what the department heads do not feel comfortable doing on their own. But the initial conversion will, you know, allow for all the data to come over. So we'll have what we have. And then for the updating, it's up to the departments, yeah.
So as a public website, we don't have an IT person in place. So I would just like us to consider, we're going to launch a website, and we don't have anyone to update it. There should be something in here for this website designer or host, someone to be able to update the content. Because as a public website in a town, we could have content that has to go up in a day, has to open less than a day. And we don't have someone in town who can do that. There's nothing in this contract that I can find yet that would stipulate that this host or design firm would, in the interim, manage that for us.
The intent is to be able to train the departments. Many of the departments want to do their own web content, and we anticipate having the IT person onboard within the next 30 days. So that will be well before this is built.
Right. We had a lot of meetings with department heads, at our department head meeting and separately.
So they will be adequately trained and able to update this themselves.
The training is a huge part of this contract.
And, Mr. Chair, I'm in the same way. It's, it's, it's like doing black magic when it comes to websites and programming. One of the modules that we got for these websites is, for just a couple clicks, they can upload minutes or upload documents very easily. That's already streamlined and pre-formatted for the website. So you don't have to do any hard coding, it's just you have to work with a software. Type what you want to type, click, and it updates.
I'd also like to add that under Exhibit 1A, Support and Maintenance, we have Civic Plus On-Site Support Team is available 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM to assist the clients with questions, concerns, suggestions regarding the functionality and usage of Civic Plus and associated applications. The support team is available during these hours via Civic Plus toll-free support number and email. Support personnel will respond to calls as they arrive under normal circumstances. If all lines are busy, messages will be returned within four hours. Action will be taken on emails within four hours if the client's customer support liaison is unable to assist. The service escalation process will begin. Emergency support for available 24 hours a day for designated named client points of contact with members of both Civic Plus project management and support teams available for urgent requests. So I think that we do have it in there and covered.
Page 35, if families looking for support and maintenance.
Yes.
Yeah, there's a nice little table at the bottom of the page that was included services. They're just, just bullet points. 7 to 7, Monday through Friday, 24/7 emergency port, dedicated support personnel, usability improvements, integration system enhancements, proactive supports, online training manuals, monthly newsletters, routine follow-up check-ins, and Civic Plus connection.
And that's on the amendment, so it is part of the contract.
All right. Thank you for bringing that up, Dave. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion? Someone? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Hearing none, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Craver.
Yes, sir. Attorney Jonathan Silverstein is here, as requested, to provide the board with an update with the Attorney General's office and steps moving forward. For those of you who may not have met, Attorney Silverstein, he is here.
Evening.
Hello.
Thank you. So I was asked to provide some advice or options to the board in light of the results of the August 1st special town meeting, in what the potential options and ramifications of those options might be. So I want to start off by noting the authority of the board, the discretion of the board, when and whether to call an election. I also want to note that there's been some confusion among a number of communities that have been considering this issue, whether or not a ballot question to ban one or more types of marijuana establishments can be put on the November state election ballot. And the answer is no, there's no statutory authorization to do that. So most towns are choosing not to try to call a concurrent local election on that same day, because although that would promote greater voter turnout, I think is the intent of trying to do it that way, there are a number of procedural inconsistencies between state and local elections, things from-
Can I just interrupt for a hot second?
Sure.
So what you're saying to me is, we will have one paper ballot that you fill the circles in on that gets fed into the machine for the upcoming November election? And that if we want to put this particular ballot question on the November ballot, there would have to be a separate sheet of paper for that?
And a separate machine.
And a separate machine.
And likely separate poll workers, although conceivably, you could have the same set of poll workers, each with a separate voter list. The voter lists would not be the same, because the laws governing who's eligible to vote for a local election or a state election are different. The laws relative to when and how to submit early voting and absentee voting are different for state and local elections. So I just wanted to draw this, there's no legal prohibition to have a town election on the same day as the state election. I would encourage you to have a heart-to-heart with your town clerk, because I think most of the town clerks are the ones who are really saying, look, this would be a logistical nightmare for us. And for that reason, most towns are opting not to do that.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to make that clear, that it would have to actually be two separate elections on the same day.
That's right.
That's going to be a little confusing.
I mean, it does happen, but it is, you know, I just wanted to make you aware of the logistical issues.
Thank you.
And if I may also just ask a quick question to the chair. But to reiterate, it is legal, it is doable, and other towns are doing it. You said most towns are not. How many? Do we know? Do we have really?
I don't, I don't have a, I can tell you, the towns that I've been working with have chosen not to do it and to instead call their ballot questions for their local, their annual election next spring.
But it is legal and it is doable, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, it is legal. Whether or not it's doable, I would encourage you to just talk to the town clerk in terms of what their resources are.
It's legal, though.
But I, but again, I heard that I had heard other towns are doing it.
They may be. I'm not, personally, I'm not working with any towns that are doing it, but I wouldn't beat their hundreds of towns in the state. So there may well be.
So we really don't know.
Yeah. So that's just one, just logistical issue. I was also asked, and I touched on this in response to a question at a previous selectman's meeting, about the issue of the general bylaw passing, the zoning bylaw not passing, and what the implications are. I want to be really clear here, I'm asked for legal advice, I give legal advice, I am not advocating anything, and I assume the pointed reference to the town in which I live was meant as some sort of suggestion that I have an agenda here. I want to be really clear with the board. I'm asked for my legal advice, that's what I give, that's what I'm professionally obligated by the rules of professional responsibility to give, and I am only responding to questions that I am asked. So there is case law that addresses the question of when a certain regulatory enactment can be adopted as a general bylaw, and when it can be adopted as a zoning bylaw. And there are a couple of cases that I would call the board's attention to. One is called Spenlinhauer versus Town of Barnstable.
Can you spell that? Sorry, I won't be able to read the case.
S.P., and I'd be happy to provide copies to the board.
Thank you.
Versus Town of Barnstable. That's AD Mass App 134.
Thank you.
So that's an appeals court case from 2011. And in that case, the appeals court rejected a general bylaw adopted by the Town of Barnstable to regulate off-street parking, so parking of motor vehicles on people's property. And in doing so, the appeals court said, look, the Town of Barnstable has previously regulated off-street parking through zoning. And this is something that is typically regulated through zoning. And for that reason, we're invalidating this general bylaw, because you can't avoid the procedural requirements, the higher quantum of vote, the statutory protections that landowners enjoy, whether it's grandfathering or other types of protections, that all attend zoning bylaws. You can't avoid all of that by just calling something a general bylaw, even if it is something you've previously regulated as zoning, that other municipalities regulate through zoning, and that, for whatever reason, you don't want to follow the zoning process. So that case was relying on a Supreme Judicial Court case called RAYCO, R-A-Y-C-O.
R-A-Y-C-O.
Versus the Board of Selectment of Rainham. And in that case, the Town of Rainham had adopted a general bylaw to regulate trailer parks. Again, the court noted, the town had previously regulated trailer parks through zoning. Other municipalities frequently regulated trailer parks through zoning. And again, both courts noted that it would frustrate the legislative purpose of imposing requirements for planning board public hearings, two-thirds quantum of vote, grandfathering protections, all of these things that go along with zoning, if all of that can just be avoided by calling something a general bylaw. So the reason I bring that up is because we're in uncharted territory. The statute that we're dealing with, Chapter 94G, has not been on the books very long, and there's no case law there. And as a previous speaker indicated, there have been municipalities that have adopted general bylaws that have banned or limited marijuana establishments. I would note that cities don't have to have their ordinances reviewed by the Attorney General, so the only way that they get tested is through court. Towns have to have their bylaws approved by the Attorney General. Generally speaking, the Attorney General bends over backwards to approve local bylaws, but will often give advice or cautions in those approval letters. And just as an example, and I think I attached it, I've provided a copy to the board previously, in East Bridgewater, the town adopted a general bylaw banning adult marijuana establishments. And the Attorney General did approve that bylaw, but cautioned that, citing Spenlinhauer, that they should consult with their town council and consider whether or not this really should be done through zoning. There's no case law that has specifically addressed this issue in the context of marijuana.
That's not surprising, though.
Because it, it just hasn't been around long enough. I will say, in the East Bridgewater case, I don't believe they had, that that town had previously adopted comprehensive zoning to deal with the same land use. And that is one of the issues that the court in both Spenlinhauer and RAYCO found to be a significant factor, is the fact that, look, you've regulated something through zoning previously, and now you're trying to regulate it through a general bylaw. That suggests you're trying, that the proponents of that general bylaw were trying to get around the requirements of zoning. So here, we have something even beyond that, which is that not only is this a subject that the town has previously regulated through zoning, and that most towns are regulating through zoning, that the AG cautions perhaps should be regulated through zoning. But were the general bylaw to pass, it would be in direct conflict with your zoning bylaw, which specifically authorizes this use subject to certain regulations. I put all of that out there not to advocate one way or another, but because I've been asked the question, and you need to know, that I suspect there would be a challenge, and there's certainly some risk that the, that a review in court would, relying on this case law, which lays out sort of the roadmap of when you can do something through a general bylaw, when you can do something through a zoning bylaw, that a review in court would determine that, particularly in these circumstances, the general bylaw shouldn't stand. I was asked at a previous meeting what potential liability there might be to the town. I really, I want to be careful here for obvious reasons, but certainly, you would imagine that a business owner or proponent who has invested a substantial amount of time and money in a project, or a property owner who stands to benefit from that project, might argue that adopting a ban through a general bylaw that's clearly designed to avoid the protections of the State Zoning Act, Chapter 48, would cause them financial harm and that they may pursue legal action as a result. I'm not saying they would be successful, I'm not saying they wouldn't, but it is something to be aware of. So you asked me to just sort of summarize those two issues. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Hi, very quickly. As you stated, the articles and the warrants that are passed at town meeting by town such as Charlton have to go to the Attorney General's office for review. So that means that what happened at the special town meeting on August 1st, those two warrants, those two warrant articles, have to go to the Attorney General's office in Boston for review. Yes?
Correct.
Are they in the review process now? Do we know where they stand?
I don't know if the town clerk has sent the packages, I assume so.
Yes, okay. So, so the town, let's assume the town clerk has sent them to the AG's office, the AG's office has them, they're going to review them. And if they come back and tell us that there's something wrong and we need to fix them, what are our obligations?
So I want to say, it's extremely, extremely rare that the Attorney General flat-out invalidates an entire bylaw.
Okay.
They view their charge as, I don't want to speak for them, but in my experience, they view their charges finding ways to approve bylaws unless there's a very clear facial conflict. And as I've discussed, I think the case law lays out a pretty good roadmap, but it's a case-by-case analysis. And I don't know that, I would tend to doubt that the Attorney General would actually invalidate the bylaw, but I would expect the type of caution that I referred to earlier.
Okay. So their office then could take a look at these and go, we will approve, but with this caveat, we suggest you do this to fix that.
Usually, what they say is, we suggest you speak with the town's council and, you know, decide whether, you know, this should be done more properly through zoning. They don't like to tell towns what to do, generally. Sometimes they will excise, with this, it's a pretty short and to-the-point bylaw, but sometimes with a long zoning bylaw, if there are particular provisions that were adopted at town meeting that the AG has an issue with, they might say, we approve- at town meeting that the AG has an issue with, they might say, "We approve the bylaw, but we excise and disapprove section whatever,"
Right.
"as not being within the town's authority,"
I've seen that.
"for whatever reason."
John, can you just, I have a quick question. Where we didn't rescind the old zoning bylaw, if somebody were to appeal the, having the general bylaw on the books with an existing zoning bylaw, would that be problematic?
I think they would likely argue that that is further evidence that the intent in doing it through a general bylaw was because a zoning bylaw would not have passed. I suspect that would be the argument, that, look, in the same town meeting, you had a general bylaw ban pass, you had a zoning bylaw that was intended to rescind a previously approved zoning bylaw that didn't obtain the required two-thirds vote, and that that is evidence that the intent was to regulate something that had previously been regulated by zoning by a general bylaw because it had a lower bar.
Joe?
Through the chair. So, come October, I know we're already considering this post-special town meeting, to in our fall special town meeting, the zoning bylaw will be taken up again for amendment, rewriting, striking, something to that effect. That would be a good place to clean up where the town stands and what the town wants to do with the zoning bylaws, so it more, hopefully, aligns with the general population.
I mean, obviously, at any point, and I do recall, hearing that the planning board was intending to take another look at the bylaw and suggest some amendments to it. Obviously, at any point, the town can put an article on the warrant to amend any of its zoning bylaws.
Okay, so with that, I know that when we met as a board the last time, we asked Robin to deal with Jonathan on this, and I believe you have something you'd like to say about this through the board.
So, this is, as you can see, the predicament is, you know, I think that the board, the impression that I've gotten is the board wishes to follow through with holding a ballot question so that the town can vote. So, I took a look at, you know, what would be the best outcome that might work to limit liability and to give the town a vote to ban. So, I'm just going to read this. "And we've had several letters and calls asking the Board of Selectmen to use caution in sending the ballot vote to ban marijuana, and you've heard some of those voices tonight. Some have asked for more information on the benefits or costs of having marijuana in town. Some have asked you to wait until you get a response back from the Attorney General's office. Some have asked that you, what would be the liability if the ban goes through, and the two establishments that have host agreements are not allowed to operate? What would be the cost of litigation to defend against a due process violation? Some have asked, what does it mean to have a ban in a zoning bylaw? And I think Attorney Silverstein has answered some of that. Another concern is whether a general bylaw can or should regulate land use, and would it stand up in court. After speaking with the attorney and considering the residents' concerns, I would recommend the following course of action. Place a marijuana zoning bylaw article to rescind the present marijuana zoning bylaw and replace it with a zoning marijuana ban on the October town meeting. This will eliminate and address the question of liability to the town from developers who already have host agreements. Also, place the planning board's marijuana zoning bylaw revisions on the October town meeting following the ban, the ban article. And I have seen their draft. They will have one ready. This way, if the ban fails at either the October town meeting or at the ballot, the present marijuana bylaw will be revised per the recommendations of the planning board. Language could be inserted that will nullify this vote if the ban is successful at both the town meeting and election. The Board of Selectmen agreed to place the marijuana zoning ban question on the May town election, which would most closely meet the intent of the special town meeting vote while still protecting the town from legal challenge. By then, we will have in place a zoning ban and, hopefully, a determination from the Attorney General's office. Also, besides all the reasons Attorney Silverstein states about why adding it to the November ballot would be onerous, the May town election would be more appropriate. This is the election where the residents expect issues affecting the town to be brought. The November election is a primary election for political parties. The annual election is focused on Charlton issues. By placing the questions on the May town election, you will both do your duty to let the residents vote on a ban, and you will minimize the risk of spending thousands on litigation."
Questions, comments from the board?
Can you just reread that first section, Robin? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Let me make sure I have it right.
And I didn't have the, I worked on this up until about four o'clock.
Okay.
Which section?
Well, now that I have it, you don't have to reread it, so thank you. So, it says here, "Place a marijuana zoning bylaw article on at town meeting in October to rescind the present marijuana zoning bylaw, also known as Article 27, and replace it with a zoning marijuana ban at the October town meeting."
Correct. If that passes, then the next article would be the planning board's article, which would have language that says if the ballot vote, if the previous article is successful, and the ballot vote at your annual town election both are positive, yes for a ban, that that, that the planning board's revisions would be nullified. Then, at the end of that, so after your ballot, so let's say both of the zoning and the ballot pass, and you have a ban. This article would dissolve. One of the issues that we've been talking about is that you have a zoning law, bylaw for marijuana in place at the same time you're trying to do a ban. So, this would withdraw the zoning bylaw, so you would have none, and it would have a ban. So, you would have a zoning bylaw ban. Then you would have one that fixes it.
So, then the zoning bylaw ban would take the place of?
Article 27.
Article 27.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could you ask the town administrator to read that again?
I would be glad to, if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay.
It was confusing.
All right. So, place a marijuana zoning bylaw article. So, it would be an article to amend the Article 27 that we have presently. To rescind it, the present marijuana zoning bylaw, and replace it. So, the language that would replace that would be the ban.
Renunciation, please?
Yes.
Ban on all marijuana business or just recreation zone?
That would be up to how the board wants to do a ban, or what the law would allow. And that is up to, I'm basing this based on the town meeting vote.
Which was, this would be adult use.
So, it would be adult use. Thank you. So, all recreational use. This would eliminate the, this would eliminate and address the question of the liability of having to, a zoning bylaw and a ban at the same time, so your ban would go away. It would also provide the protections for the developers who already have host agreements, which is what zoning attempts to do, as said by the attorney. The next article I would recommend is that you put the planning board's revisions on it. So, now the planning board will have an article that will take Article 27, and it will make the changes that they're working on now. And then there would be something that says in there, "This bylaw will dissolve if the ban at town meeting, the zoning ban at town meeting and the ban at the ballot is successful." So, we can eliminate that one, so we still don't have something on the books. So, we wouldn't know how it ends up until the end when we have the election. But we would eliminate all of the conflicts.
Wait a minute. Does the board have any questions or comments?
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Karen.
First of all, I really don't like that we're getting this information once again.
And I have to, and I have to say that this, we've worked on this to the last minute with the attorney. As you know, Ms. Craver wasn't around that last week. She started on this yesterday. So, it was either bring this forward without everybody seeing it, you know, at the time. I saw this at, what, quarter of six. That's the first thing. And so, and I understand you don't like to get things at the last minute, but sometimes that does happen, especially when we have to work on it. So, and the other thing is, that the other thing is, if we didn't do this, then I would have said we put off, if we didn't have this in front of us, after listening to the attorney, I would have said we put off all decisions until we get some more information from the attorney and the Attorney General. So, I think that it's a good thing that we have this in front of us.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead, Joe.
I think this, we also, this is just the town administrator's recommendation as well. And there's been a lot of evidence and a lot of information given to us before this, via email as well. So, this is just the town administrator giving her professional recommendations.
And I appreciate it, but I don't appreciate, you know, once again.
We understand.
Right. And quite honestly, if I may, as one of the leaders of the town, it is so important that we take the polls of the community to see where we're heading. And I think the sooner we do that, the better. And I'm still in favor of putting this out on the ballot vote in November, even though it may be very difficult, because the people have spoken loud and clear what they want, and we really don't know. We had people here talking about the truth. And regardless of what side you're on, it's imperative that we know what people want to do sooner rather than later. And as far as this whole bit about we may be sued, guess what? Just about every decision we make, we may be sued. We're taking a risk. But I, for one, want to know, and I want to know soon, sooner rather than later, what the people in this town really, really want. And the only way to do that is to move forward, put this on the ballot, and then adjust everything after that, when we know, then we can set the course and move forward accordingly.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's funny, because Ms. Peerk and I, we agree on some things and disagree on others. The end result may be the same, though. How we get there differs. So, I actually do believe that we have a very good feel for what the majority of the taxpayers want. I think they said it at the polls during our presidential election. That being said, I also think that we've had talk of this being America and patriotism, that anyone who wants to argue that 400 voters or even 500 voters is a mandate for either side, needs to take a look at the size of the town. Because the reality is, there are over 12,000 people in this town, and over 9,600 of them are registered voters. So, four or 500 show up and split that, majority goes one way, minority another way, and you get an outcome. Neither side in that argument is a mandate, not when four or 500 are deciding for almost 10,000 registered voters. If you want to be patriotic, you also know that the American way is that vocal minorities don't affect change, it affects the silent majority, which is exactly what this is doing. That being said, however, we also have rules. And you can't arbitrarily decide, "Oh, we're going to apply that rule to you and not to you." So, a group of citizens follow the rules. There may be repercussions, there may be unintended consequences. They may know of them, they may not, they may not care. They may be real, they may or may not happen, but the bottom line is, who do you decide to apply the rules to, and when do you decide not to apply the rules? And I just, for one, believe you apply the rules evenly to everybody. Doesn't matter what side I'm on. Rules were followed, they got a petition, they came to town meeting, this is what they wanted. So, now it goes, in my opinion, to a ballot. And once it goes to the ballot, and while I agree with Karen, I do believe a presidential is the best year. However, I think you're better off having thousands of people at a poll this fall than a couple of hundred in the spring. So, I think that, my opinion is, you do go to a ballot, because someone's going to come to us later and say, "Hey, we also followed the rules." And we need to tell them, "Oh, well, we decided we're not going to apply them to you." So, that's just my position, Mr. Chairman.
Anything? Okay. I think we have a duty to do no harm. I think that's incredibly important, that whatever decision we make, we have a duty to do no harm to the town, to anyone in the town or the town itself. And I want to proceed with caution, because there is no case law on the books for this, and I don't want to hang us out to dry. We have to be very careful in how we proceed. There's nothing wrong with being cautious. When you rush headlong into something, the only thing you hurt is your head. So, that's, sure, let's put this to a vote and see what happens. And what happens might be worse than what any of you could imagine. Or we can proceed with caution, we can get an opinion from the AG's office, and find out where we actually stand. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I would rather be cautious and do it the right way than rush headlong and do it the wrong way and have to redo it.
Through the chair. I would, I would say we are not rushing, that's for sure, but I, and I hear you, but all we are doing is listening to the people who put us into office to represent them, and we're giving them the vehicle to make the decision. If an entity is going to turn around and decide to sue us, it's not like the selectman sat up here and said, "Hey, we want to reneg on this," whatever agreement you want to talk about. We're letting the people decide. And I just go back to, I need to know, as a leader of this community, where are we going? Tell me the direction. And the only way to do that is to, whether you're for this or against it, get out and vote. Let us know, let me know, so we can then move in that direction, and then act neighborly to one another again, because that's kind of gone away, too. But anyway, I do, I thank everyone who's been here today or come and wrote all the emails, but we need to go through the process. And if we don't put this to ballot, it is a directly, if someone sent this in an email, and I'm quoting them, it's a slap in the face to the people who put us into office.
Who's first? Joe?
So, I think I agree with everyone on a certain level, that, yes, we do owe it to the people to put this to a ballot question. We also owe it to the people to make sure we do it in a smart manner. I would say that, from several different sources, from two town meetings and a statewide election, that there has been a certain pool of the people and the few young people out there. It's conflicting in certain ways, but there is, and I think you're right, that we do need an election. We would need to have the language done by next week to submit to be on the ballot in November. And having not even heard back from the Attorney General's office, I don't feel comfortable putting that on a ballot question. And I would advocate that we hold it at a May election. And the people who care about their town, who, you know, will come up, I hope to see we have wonderful turnout, a large turnout for a town election, something that's been, I'm sorry? Something that's been, you know, one of my goals is to get community involvement. If people care about the town, and this is an issue that will affect the town, people should be doing the patriotic duty in coming out to vote. Back when I was first elected in 2013, my election was held on a special primary day. They combined the elections to save money. And the comment that a lot of people made was, it was very confusing having the two ballots, so that people weren't aware that marijuana was even being voted on, or the town election was being voted on that day. And that's confusing, and a lot of times they don't see it until that election day as well. I think having it until May gives both sides, all sides, opportunity to educate, to provide outreach, and for us to develop language that will be the most outreach, and for us to develop language that will be the most sustainable, put the town in the best position, and get what the people actually want to vote on.
David?
Mr. Chair, so, there's an old saying about the end doesn't justify the needs. And I believe that, which is, again, why I go back to, there were rules and they were followed. This is a case, however, where maybe we do need to revisit the rules. It doesn't help us today, but the fact is, maybe it should be more than 150 signatures or 200 signatures, which a candidate for office can get in one weekend standing outside of tents. Maybe it should require a two-thirds vote, not just a simple majority, to affect changes such as this, so it's at least a bit more difficult for small groups to affect the masses. But the reality is, today, those rules were followed.
So, I have a couple of things to say, and I wholeheartedly agree with a lot of Karen's comments. Sure. The problem with heaven is exactly what I've said before. We have a zoning bylaw on the books that was not rescinded, okay? We have a general bylaw that was passed on the same night as Attorney Silverstein brought I think, in listening to him, the legal jeopardy is that somebody appeals this and we end up in court. The Board of Selectmen, as we are responsible to the citizens to make sure that their will is heard, we're also responsible to make sure that we do no harm to the town financially. I don't believe postponing this till April 1st, or the May town meeting, excuse me, or annual election, would be not allowing people's voices to be heard. I also believe that it gives us time to hear from the Attorney General on several things. Article 27 and the legality of some of the amendments that were applied to the article at the town meeting. I believe it also gives us the chance to hear on the legality of having the general bylaw on the books with a zoning bylaw. And what is the cautionary statement going to be from, or are we even going to get a cautionary statement from the Attorney General's office, saying that we are not going to tell you to strike this, but we're going to tell you to talk to your town council and do this by a zoning bylaw? So, I believe that what we have worked out here, or what's before us right now, and we don't have to jump to do this right now, but I think that this is a fair and reasonable way to try and keep everybody's irons in the fire, you know, and to keep the town out of legal jeopardy. Joe? Karen, did you have something to say?
Just, I respectfully disagree with your statement, and what Ms. Craver read wasn't necessarily, did you all work on this?
No.
All right. So, that was a town administrator's opinion?
And the opinion of, with Mr. Silverstein, for the questions that we asked. David?
And just one point, I will also respectfully disagree that postponing to May does not prevent us from potentially having financial harm to the town at that point in time.
No, we have more information.
But it could also be harmed in a different way. And as far as the Attorney General goes, anything that we do, whether at a town meeting or a vote, the AG can later determine is illegal and invalid, correct?
Joe, do you have something? No? Where do we go from here?
I think we have to take action on the request of the voters, Mr. Chair.
So, we have motion.
You did say you would take a couple.
I'll take a couple, but it's going to be very brief, okay? And it can't be the same stuff that's been hearing. So, Bill?
Please, thank you. Anytime.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm going to take a slightly different tack tonight and talk around procedure.
Name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill Borowski, 69 Hagerty Road.
I have the pleasure of knowing Bill.
John, it's all my pleasure. Ultimately, the intent of the special town meeting, by its very nature of it being a special town meeting called by residents, was to expedite their vote. That intent is very clear to say, if it passed, that the people in this room wanted a ballot vote as quickly as possible. Quite frankly, to delay this until the spring would have been more than two years since this first came up in May 2017. When you include preparatory work to get the question on there, et cetera, literally, more than two years for this board and different iterations of this board to have asked these questions prior. This is truly about a process that we can divorce marijuana from it for a moment. This is about the separation of powers and the respect between the different branches of government. The legislative branch being town meeting, and obviously this board with the town administrator being the executive. To ignore, and we can debate semantics and say, we're not ignoring, we're only postponing eight to nine months, is doing a disservice to what the people at town meeting voted for. The intent was clearly at the latest November. And through the chair, to Mr. Silverstein, again, you may not listen, forgive me, I'm going to put you on the spot, but when you talk around zoning bylaws versus general, et cetera, and Attorney General caveats, the North Andover is in a very similar situation. And they passed a general bylaw. And the response from the AG did not have any caveats. It was very straightforward, saying, we approve this bylaw. And again, again, I invite others in the audience to correct me, it's a mea culpa if I'm wrong, but I believe that I am correct.
I'll correct them.
Wait a minute, sir. Wait, let the law hang, let it finish.
So, what I am asking this board to do is simply follow the will and the intent and spirit of what occurred at the special town meeting. History is made by those of us who show up. I refuse to accept apathy as a reason not to hold a vote. If it happens in November, it happens in November. Quite honestly, I'll be voting against this. But I respect the right of the voters to call this vote as quickly as possible. Those who don't follow this path tonight, I believe you are doing a disservice to every single person who's gone to town meeting. And when we think around a 400 or 500 people showing at the town meeting as not being a mandate, how many of you were elected with 400 or 500 votes? And you're all following that as a mandate. Again, with all due respect.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm only going to speak to the one point, just to correct a factual.
Name and address, sir. Name and address. Excuse me.
Michael Rosen, 255 State Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
Excuse me. He is correcting one fact, one fact only, because, well, that doesn't matter. Who wants to hear who? The chair has recognized him, that's it.
He's correcting me, I actually want to hear it.
Please, thank you, I appreciate it. North Andover passed two bylaws. They passed the general bylaw and a zoning bylaw at the exact same time, Articles One and Articles Two. North Andover did not previously have a zoning bylaw in place, and North Andover previously did not have any contracts with any parties for cannabis facilities in North Andover. So, when the Attorney General reviews that bylaw, it is reviewing it under a completely different set of circumstances, because it was adopted in conjunction with the zoning bylaw. There were Articles One and Article Two that evening, and both bylaws passed by more than a two-thirds vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a question for him?
No, 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 Steve, no, no.
But I'm a resident, I'd love to ask him one question.
After the meeting, Steve, if you want to ask him a question, thank you. This is about, this is about, this is about whether we can hold the vote. Go ahead, sir.
Through the chair, I'd like to ask for some clarifications from the administrator and from the chair on her suggestions. In Sections One and Two, we are taking a vote by your suggestion on an article for zoning, and it would require a two-thirds vote for both of those sections, following that up with a general vote that requires only a majority, that could cancel the previous zoning regulations on only a majority?
No, sir. Both of those articles would be two-thirds votes. All zoning articles are two-thirds votes.
And the final section that you were talking about going to the planning board was?
The final section would be a ballot vote, and that's a majority vote at an election.
But if it passes, it would cancel, you're saying it would cancel the previous zoning articles?
What I said was, if the first one passed and there was a zoning ban, marijuana ban, it took away Article 27, the second article could be written to revise the zoning if there's not, if the two, the ban is not successful. If the ban is successful, there could be language in there that states that it stands. So, you could have all of the pieces, you could have revision revised by the planning board, and if the two votes to ban at the ballot and the October meeting, through a zoning ban passed, then you would be all done, you would have no conflict.
So, that would all be on a two-thirds majority?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I did make a motion to act on that.
Yeah, see, no one understood that, Dave, that's what I'm trying to say.
I made the motion to act on that, but no one seconded it.
Okay, how, what was your motion?
To take the vote out of the part number one to, for November.
So, your motion is?
To put these on the ballot for November. Take a vote on it now.
Is there a second?
I'm not sure I'm clear with motions.
Yeah. Excuse me, can we please talk?
Yes.
So, everyone can hear us?
Good idea.
The person in the back actually asked if you could use the mic, they're having trouble hearing in the back.
The motion was to put these very questions on the ballot this November.
What questions?
We can't put Article One.
The question was, see, the town will vote to rescind the adoption of Article 27 in the 2018 annual town meeting, and citizen petition, prohibition of non-medical marijuana general bylaw.
No, that's, 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 all that was, was what took place at the special town meeting.
But these are the questions they want.
No.
Can you clarify, Mr. Chair?
Yes, what they wanted, what the petitioners, who they voted town meeting, want to do is, the general bylaw, which I don't have in front of us, they would like us to put that bylaw on, on, for, on November 4th, on the state, the state election. So, your motion would be to put the general bylaw that was passed at the special town meeting on August 1st.
Correct.
Onto the November.
That's what I said.
No, you didn't, but it's okay.
Different words, but that's what I was saying.
I'll second that. Did everyone understand?
No one's prepared.
Okay. David's motion is to take the article, the general, the general bylaw that was passed at August, at the August 1st special town meeting, to put it on to the November 4th ballot, which is the state election ballot.
It would have to be concurrent, because it can't be on the state.
Correct. The logistics would be, the logistics, the logistics would be worked out between the town clerk and.
Right. We would have to call a special election. And we would have to have language by Tuesday.
Correct.
But that's November 6th.
So, that would be your motion.
Correct.
And I'd second that.
Can we just clarify the date, since it's a motion?
Okay, go ahead.
The 2nd, the 1st Tuesday, November's actually November 6th.
November 6th?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Safrovich?
What's the motion?
The motion is to put the general bylaw that was passed at the August 1st special town meeting on the November 6th state ballot.
No.
To put it on as a special election during the same time as the state election.
Okay.
There's already a motion, so I can't comment.
No, well, now it's discussion, we can discuss the motion.
Move on, discuss it. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, I made all my comments.
What?
I think everybody has.
So, I just want to make one more comment. I think a very good point that was made was the intent. The intent of town meeting, the intent of voting, the intent of the elections. And I think that is open up to interpretation, but two issues of intent that I see here is, the same town meeting that we voted to ban as a general bylaw was the same night that we did not ban during a zoning bylaw. So, there's a question of intent there that I want, that I would like to see cleaned up at a, at another town meeting, one that, one that we hold every year in October. And another, I still go back to what I said earlier about the intent of elections, where there's the intent to a voter at a town election to vote on town issues. And it's not like we're not being proactive and actively working on dealing with this issue. And I would like to see us have, take up the zoning bylaw at an October town meeting that bans marijuana, but also see come May, what people expect to vote on town issues, to vote on a town issue.
Is there any more discussion? Go ahead.
I'd like to thank Selectman Safrovich for bringing up intent, because I hadn't thought about that until you just said it. Yes, we've been here, excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'll go back.
And I appreciate being marked when I'm speaking, thank you. So, yes, there was an intent to rescind Article 27, and there was also an intent from over a third of the individuals in that audience to see Article 27 stay in place. That was their intent, and they were successful in that intent. That was their goal. So, yes, you have an intent and a desire and a need to see this on the ballot, to see that ban go into place and see it passed. And there's nothing more important than voting, nothing. People in other countries waited in line for days for the opportunity to vote. Women in this country have only had the opportunity to vote for about 100 years, and women died so you would have that right. So, it's not that I don't appreciate the idea of voting, but it is important. And again, I really appreciate Selectman Safrovich bringing that up. There is more than one side to this. There truly is. And if the intent is to have laws that are fair and just for everybody, then we have to honor those intents. Yes, I want this to go to a ballot vote. I also have a duty to protect the town and to honor those people who made sure that that rescission didn't take place, because that wasn't what they wanted. So, we have to have something balanced and fair and equitable for everybody involved. That's all.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Safrovich?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the motion on the floor, to change from a special election concurrent with the November election to the 2019 annual town meeting, annual town election.
Can you speak louder? I can't hear you.
Sure, I'm sorry. I made a motion to amend the motion to change the time of the election from being a special election concurrent with the upcoming November election, to instead be at the 2019 annual town election.
What purpose would that be?
Excuse me, excuse me.
Mr. Chair?
Well, wait a minute. Okay, so we have, wait a minute, you can't have discussion until you have a second. So, I'm looking to the boards, is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Okay, is there, now is there discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's the same reasons I gave before, that we have to have language by next week, that we haven't heard from the Attorney General, that we have conflicting issues with our last special town meeting, and that we have an opportunity at the upcoming town meeting to address the zoning issue. That's why I think it behooves a wait, and also, the intent of a town affecting issue to be voted on a town election. That's why I made my amendment.
Any further comments from the board?
Through the chair, again, I respectfully disagree. I'm looking at my peers and I'm saying, do we not want to know as soon as possible? We do, none of us can sit here and say, we know what the town really wants, and therefore that makes our job very difficult about how to steer the ship. And therefore, that makes our job very difficult about how to steer the ship forward, right? How to plot the course. So I'm against any kind of delay. I believe our attorney has said, I mean, in so many ways, that we can put this to ballot, we can put this on the November 6th ballot, we can move forward, and then after that, have everything fall into place. We don't know what's going to happen. That's the, that's the point of all this, right? So let's find out as soon as possible and respect the procedure, the democratic process. Again, whatever side you're on, it doesn't matter. But what does matter is, we find out truly what this town wants. And when we have that vote, and it's all day long, people who work very, you know, long shifts or whatever, it's advertised in advance, they know to come to the meeting, I mean, to come and vote. So again, I, I don't beg, but I really am employing, I'm asking all the peers sitting around this table to please follow the will of the people. We know what they said loud and clear. It was, to Mr. Singer's comments, the process, it was legal, and that's what we have to live by right now. And it's not us saying, all we're doing is saying, you know what, we are within our rights to say no. We could say no, we don't want to do this at all. Of course, that's not the right thing to do. But let's put this to bed sooner rather than later, and just move forward and, and let the people decide. All we're doing is giving them that vehicle, and then we're going to take it, be prepared, and we're going to move forward. That's, that's all. It's that simple. And I just feel like if we postpone it, there's going to be even more, the next, I just, I'm tired of looking at dots on maps and doing tallies of emails. We know, we heard loud and clear what the people want, and that is to take a vote.
Thank you, Karen. David?
No.
Dave? Okay. We have amendments to the motion on the floor. All in favor for the amendment to hold the, the election for the general bylaw on, what was it, May, but May annual town meeting, Joe?
2019.
Election.
Of 2019.
And is it not voting on the motion as a whole, just to change the motion to that?
Correct.
Is there discussion?
Amongst, amongst us, yes. So I'm willing to open it up more.
It's more procedural than anything right now.
I agree, it's a void vote.
It's a, this is a.
Okay.
So we have a motion to amend to the May annual town meeting on 2019 to hold the vote on the general bylaw. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? No.
No.
The ayes have it, three to two.
But we still have the, Mr. Chair, there's still a motion on the floor to actually vote on the motion to hold the election.
Correct.
So there's still discussion on that issue as well?
Correct. There's a, now there's discussion on holding the election, holding the vote on the amended article, which is changing it from November 6th to May annual town meeting.
It's already been changed.
Yeah, no, no, but I'm saying that's, now we have to vote on the, on the complete. Okay? Any further discussion?
Clarify. What are we voting on? No, no, seriously.
It's the same motion, but with a date change. So instead of November, it would be in May.
But we just voted to pass?
No, we voted to amend.
The amendment, we amended the.
Mr. Singer's motion.
Can someone read back the, Mr. Chair? Put you right on the spot. Go ahead.
Okay. So the amendment was to change the date from the November?
What's the current motion on the floor, Mr. Chair?
The current, the current motion is to hold a vote, or to place on the ballot the question that was passed, the general bylaw question that was passed, the August 1st special town meeting, to place that on the ballot at the annual town meeting in May on 2019. That is, the motion that's on the floor now.
So a vote, a vote yes makes it happen in May. The vote no means no action happens at all.
Correct. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any questions about what we're, what we're voting on? Hearing on scene, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 Basically, if I vote no, it doesn't do the.
It's a moot point, but you can make a protest vote.
If you feel no, then you vote no, and that's okay.
Well, I don't need the encouragement. I'm just making a point that I'm very disappointed that. Yeah.
I think that's clear by the earlier vote.
All right.
We understand. So with that.
I vote no.
Vote no. Okay, it's four to one. Mr. Chair? Mr. Singer?
Since that business is done, there's a comment, I think, that should be made to everyone in this room, for those who care, don't walk out that fast. And that would be, if there's going to be, there's going to be an election, votes are going to have to be cast, and it behooves those on both sides to get their word out to affect the outcome that they choose.
Exactly.
And if the people don't do it, they may not get the result they want. So now it's upon both sides to get their word out.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Chair, I would also like to make, take an action, or at least a intent action, on putting the zoning bylaw ban on the October town meeting.
Okay.
Can I, can I make a motion?
You can.
Because I know, I know the warrants aren't open, will not be open until next week, or next, next meeting. But I do want to affirm that it is our intent, at least my intent, to take up the action of doing a zoning bylaw ban proposal at the upcoming October town meeting. So I'll make that a motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on putting a zoning bylaw ban on the October annual town meeting?
So as, as, as was mentioned earlier, that we're not holding back and letting things happen and delaying, it's that we're still being proactive and taking action.
And so what's going to be put on, just to clarify?
Yep. So a change to a zoning bylaw, zoning bylaw that says adult use, adult recreation use marijuana is banned, as a zoning bylaw.
So the present marijuana zoning bylaw would be rescinded and removed from the zoning bylaw?
Mm-hmm.
And it would be replaced with a ban?
Correct.
And, and what would happen is the people that already have agreed, have host agreements in place, and, and have already invested money in this, would be protected by zoning bylaw? Correct.
Well, just to clarify, having a host agreement in and of itself doesn't grandfather you.
Having run all, all through what they have.
If you have either what's called a plan freeze, or you have grandfathering for some early reason because you started to use or received a building permit.
Correct.
And then I presume that if that were to pass at the October town meeting, you would then have two articles on the warrant in May, on the election in May, two ballot questions, one zoning ban, one general bylaw ban?
Correct. Okay.
So we wouldn't want to hold off until the actual vote that we just talked about?
No.
Because?
There's several reasons that I think, okay? One, I don't believe that the, that we are going to.
Talk into the mic.
I don't believe that we are going to prevail in any appeal that takes place on the general bylaw being detrimental to somebody that has been affected by the zoning bylaw that didn't get rescinded. This is my own personal view. I believe that the town is opened up, open for litigation by numerous people. And I believe that, that the only way that, that anything is going to stand, no matter what we vote on at the annual town meeting, is going to be a zoning bylaw. Because you already had one on the books, that's what you were using to, that's what you were using to, to, to control the development. And, and after the fact, at a special town meeting, you passed a general bylaw to try and do, to try and reverse that. I don't think, you know, and I know Jonathan's not going to step into this, because he really can't about litigation, but common sense says, somebody, somebody who's invested money, and we've signed a contract with, and they've been protected by zoning, and now the town's going to try and do something by a general bylaw, we're going to be on the hook.
Even though it's not us making that decision, it's the people of the town, so they're.
We're responsible. We're responsible for that. That's why we have him here, and that's why we ask him counsel, and that's why we make some decisions that we make.
It actually would be you, because you're the only ones that can put it on the ballot.
So Selectman Noble has to, has to leave. We have.
Ten minute recess.
Yep.
A few minute recess.
I would just like to do one thing. We have this, we have this one.
Motion.
Motion and a second on zoning bylaw for the, for the October.
October, yeah. And this is more of an intent because the warrant's not open yet?
Correct.
So let me work a draft together, maybe you just ask me to do a draft for you for consideration in two weeks.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this, or do you? Hearing on scene, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. I know you're not the.
Ten minute recess.
Yep. The board's going to take a three to five minute recess. And thank you. We've returned from our recess. It's 8:45. And.
I've got, I just.
Committee reports? Do we have any committee reports?
So we took up everything else, Mr. Chair, under all business?
Correct.
Okay.
Policy review, we have nothing tonight. Town administrators report. Ms. Craver.
Yes, sir. As you know, I've been working with the assessing department regarding, and my screen just went to, wait a minute. Regarding an appeal of Chelton Tax on solar arrays, the Director of Assessing interviewed several attorneys and has decided on David Klimboff from Gilman, McLaughlin, and Huron, LLP from Boston. I will be signing the Agreement for Services. As we've discussed before, Chelton stands to lose millions if we lose this case, because we expect all other solar arrays to file the same appeals. We know that we will lose at the ATB stage because of some of the decisions that are coming out, but think it's worth appealing to the next court. The Agreement for Legal Services Agreement is attached for your review. And Small Scale Initiatives Grants, we received a 1,000 grant for use of recycling and waste, to use for recycling and waste reduction from DEP. Also, just to add, that we have added stripes out in the parking lot, which will organize the cars. I think that'll help.
Looks good.
Make it so that we, we can have more parking. And we also, just before I came in, I saw a notice and created a press release that we will be getting over $5,000 back from our efforts in loss control from our insurance company as, as a divided credit. So I'd like to thank those that are on the Loss Control Committee.
Any other business unknown at the time of posting? Seeing none. The next, our next meeting is the regular Selectmen's Meeting, September 11th, 2018, at 6:30 PM, right here at the Selectmen's Meeting Room. On October 2nd, the Board of Selectmen are going to have a Goal and Objectives Meeting at 6:30 PM at Ford Dresser Hill. With that, we're going to adjourn, adjourn to executive session on the Mass General Law, as I stated before. And we're going to return to open session for the purpose of any other actions, and then to adjourn. Mr. Saffarovich.
Yes, thank you. Just to clarify, the other action to be taken, would be taken up with the public power, correct?
Correct.
As well as the expectations that we're not going to be voting on anything else?
Correct. Thank you, Dave.
And then I will make the motion that we enter executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 21, for reasons, number one, to discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual; and for reason number three, to discuss strategy regarding litigation and potential settlement with public power concerning the town's electricity supply agreement, if, if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the, on the negotiation position of the public body, and to return to open session for the purposes of any other action, and to adjourn.
The chair so declares, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Karen?
Yep.
David?
Yeah.
Joe?
Aye.
John, aye. This is, as we said.
There's one sole holdout.
It's just giving you a feeling that you were important.
Thank you.